Today's meeting was noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This commission acts in review and recommending capacity for comprehensive plan amendments, text amendments to the Charleston County zoning and land development regulations, ordinance, rezonings, and plan developments. The commission has decision-making authority on road name change requests, public project reviews, appeals of administration decisions on final plats and subdivision matters, as well as other matters pursuant to Chapter 29, Title VI, Section 6-29-340 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended. If you wish to speak at today's meeting, you should have signed in with a sheet by the door. My name is Cindy Floyd. I'm Chair of the Commission. To my right, we have Pete Palatos, Luke Morris, and Adam McConnell. To my left, we have David Kent, Warwick Jones, Logan Davis, and Susan Cox. Also seated to my right is Commission Attorney Mark Bell, and seated to my left, Joel Evans, Director of Zoning and Planning. Joel, would you please introduce the staff?
Sure. Start with Andrea Melisick, the Deputy Director. We also have Marsha Miller, Wynne Carlisle, Stephanie Ondo, Monica Eustace, Emily Piggott, and Tamara Avery, who will be presenting the subdivision requests. Also, that works with Tamara, Alex Ludwig, and my boss, Walt Smalls, the Deputy County Administrator for General Services.
Okay. I would like to remind you that in order to get a good recording of the meeting for the minutes, please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones, and do not talk over one another. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 10, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Logan Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Marlena Davis? Oh, she is not here, sorry. Chair Floyd?
Here. Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
The next agenda item is SBDV-06-23-02467, a subdivision plat application taking two existing lots and creating a total of four lots for tax map number S614000-615 and 614-00-00331 at 1083 Gadsenville Road. Tamara Avery is going to make the presentation.
Good afternoon. So subdivision staff received application SBDV-062302467 for review for subdivision to create lots. It was presented at the Historic Preservation Commission on June 26, today at the July 8 Planning Commission. The proposal was for the applicant to take two existing lots and creating a total of four lots. This is the current zoning of the two parcels. However, I'd like to note that the property was zoned R4 at the time of application. This is the future land use map, the aerial view, and the flood zone map. These are the site photos of the property, looking towards the property, and then on either side of the road. And this is the proposed plat that was submitted to subdivision staff, which we reviewed per R4 zoning district standards. And this is a copy of Chapter 4 in our ZLDR, the R4 residential minimum lot standards. This is a section of state laws, Section 6-29-340 that I've quoted previously, that gives Planning Commission the power to approve or deny subdivision plats. And this is a section of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, in which why we took the subdivision applications to the HPC. Section 21-6 subdivision plat application reports. The purpose, in order to encourage and preserve the historic character of historic properties and historic districts, preliminary and minor subdivision plat applications as defined in the Charleston County ZLDR, for properties in historic districts and within the 300 feet of the historic properties must be evaluated by the commission prior to final determination by the Charleston County Planning Commission. This is a section from the Comprehensive Plan of the Cultural Resource Element Goals. And these are the Cultural Resource Element Strategies and Timeframes that Historic Preservation Commission used to provide their report. So from the Historic Preservation Commission Report, all eight members of the Historic Preservation Commission stated that proposed subdivision is not consistent with the Cultural Resource Element of the Comprehensive Plan, citing inconsistencies with element goals, statement, and strategies CR1, CR2, CR3, CR5, CR7, and CR9, and that's cumulative of all the members. No member stated the proposed subdivision is consistent with the Cultural Resource Element of the Comprehensive Plan. And I've added the goals, I've just listed them out. The application does comply with all requirements of the Charleston ZLDR, Charleston County ZLDR ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval. For notifications, 309 notification letters were sent to individuals in the Cooper and Historic Preservation Settlement Community and the Settlement Community Commission Interested Parties list, as well as properties owned within 300 feet of the subject parcel. Those were sent out on June 7. It was posted in the Post and Courier on June 7, and signs were posted on June 4. Public input, seven letters in opposition were provided to the Historic Preservation Commission, and a petition in opposition with 64 signatures were received prior to the June 26 HPC meeting. Zero people spoke in support of it, two people spoke in opposition to it, and for the public input for this meeting, the Planning Commission received an additional one letter in opposition and one petition signature in opposition. And that is the presentation for this subdivision application.
Any questions from the Commission or staff? We'll now hear public comments. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address before giving your comments.
The applicant didn't sign up to speak. You don't want me to say something about that, does that?
Well, the applicant did not sign up to speak, so is the applicant here? Okay.
Did you come in after the sign-in?
I did.
Yeah. Since he is the applicant.
Okay, we'll hear from you first.
Okay.
All right, I'm the applicant, Phil Spitz. This is the first one, right? Subdivision plat 062302467, is that correct?
Yes.
We made this request, it's been in from R4 zoning before the zoning change, S3, it meets zoning requirements, and we support and request that it gets subdivision approved for the four lots. Or this is Gadsenville, yeah, four lots. Is there anything else?
You're the applicant, we just wanted to give him the opportunity to speak.
Okay. It meets zoning requirements and state law. We want it for lots. Thank you.
The first one, Pearl Askew?
Pearl Askew, 977 Gadsenville Road, Alwindah. In reference to this particular parcel, 614000165 and 614000331, as you was just... Does that better?
Yeah, I was actually motioning to the audiovisual person in the back. But yes, that's better, Pearl. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to repeat? Are you good? You guys good? Okay. Anyways, in reference to the applicant and what he's asking for this particular subdivision, we have not, in the 10 Mile Historical District, have not had this type of pattern of development in past 80 years. Even when it was R4, it did not meet the consistent pattern of the historical 10 Mile community. The setbacks is not consistent with what we are embarking on. The Historical Preservation Commission has already denied and said that these lots will not be consistent with the 10 Mile Historical District, and also the Comprehensive Plan when it comes to supporting settlement communities and how the patterns are laid out. It's totally different from your average, what we would call subdivision and lot sizes. I'm asking for denial of this particular applicant. Thank you.
Myra Richardson?
My name is Myra Richardson. My address is 2755 Earl Johnson Lane, Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. I'm the President of the Hamlin Beach Community. We stand in support of the 10 Mile community in asking you to deny this applicant's request. None of the 37 developed lots on Gadsenville Road are smaller than .40 acres. One of, one is approximately 20 undeveloped lots is smaller than the .40 acres. The new parcel would also be, would be less than any lot that are already on that, that road. So we're asking, once again, in helping saving and protecting the settlement communities to deny this application, applicant's request. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. No other speakers signed up for this particular item, so are there any questions that anybody has for, for discussion on the commission?
Just curious, legally, how do we stand on, since it's zoned R4 and it meets the requirements of R4?
I'll start. It's actually currently zoned S3. The applicant made his application when the property was zoned R4. When we, when an application is submitted, and we have a complete application, they, we review it under the ordinance that was in effect that the application was made. So that's where we are with this one and the next one. I think we only have two applications that were in process in R4. It's this case and the next one. So therefore, that's why staff made their recommendation, because it met the, or meets the ordinance that was in, in effect at the time the application was made.
Anybody else?
Once I get my mic working. So I had two, I guess, general questions, and these were comments that came from both the Historic Preservation's comments, as well as comments received from the public. The first was the, the general lot layouts or the cadastral patterns that are seen as unique to these communities. I wasn't too sure, was there, what's the study done or explanation for the current cadastral patterns or existing cadastral patterns for the plots? So like, generally speaking, my assumption for these settlement communities was that plots are generally more linear. And actually, if you look at the presentation, I guess, that we'll have at the end of the meeting, that seems to back that up. But I don't see really any continuity or pattern in this, in the 10 Mile community that's like continual, if that makes sense. What's the explanation for that, or what's the staff's opinion on the existing cadastral patterns?
Well, I think in 10 Mile, you'll see a lot of differences in lot sizes. Some lots are very large, and some lots are quite small because they were developed under the R4 zoning district with the minimum lot size. In this particular case, in this application and the next one, the lot sizes actually exceed the new zoning of S3. I think the first one is like 13, over 13,000 square feet, this application. The minimum lot size in S3 is 12,500. Without getting into the, the density issue, they are allowed to, because they went under R4, they're getting one extra lot that the S3 would not allow them to get under current zoning. So there's, it's just one lot difference.
But the... Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. As far as recognizing the, the different lot sizes in 10 Mile, I will say that the 10 Mile community is working on an overlay district that would, I think, even change the, if it was adopted by council, would change the zoning even more drastically from S3 to, to something less, density-wise, and, but larger lot sizes.
Right.
Yeah. And they seem to be leaning toward that larger lot size and, and what the overlay district proposals that we've seen.
And then the other comment that was mostly in the letters from the public was in terms of how the homes are generally laid out, saying that essentially wider and less deep seems to be the more historic, although it seems that's more 60s ranch-style homes. Is there like a study that's been done on these settlement communities in terms of historic house layout? Obviously, this is a subdivision, so there's no like conversation really on houses, but since the public had brought that to our attention, I just wanted to know if there was some kind of study on existing historic house layouts in this area or in settlement communities in general.
In this particular area in 10 Mile, there was a, what we call an area character analysis of 10 Mile that has been, that we are in receipt of and we're in the process of reviewing. I believe that 10 Mile wants to have that codified by council to be a document that is actually used for the architecture that's located in 10 Mile. We haven't gotten there yet, but, but the, some representatives from the 10 Mile community have presented that to staff for consideration.
I certainly have sympathy with the members of the community, but I really think it's pretty good account. Sorry. I may have sympathy with some of the members of the community who don't like the proposal before us, but realistically, we have to face the fact that this application was made under different circumstances, different zoning, which applies. And we may argue about the merits of what is required or what the Historic Preservation is asking or why it is opposing, but legally, it seems to me, and I think it's the, the opinion of the legal counsel, that the applicant is standing here to go forward under the proposal that he's made, and that, that there's nothing much we can do about it.
Any other comments, questions from the Commission? Do we have a motion and a second?
I move with the staff recommend, move for the staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Palatos seconded it. All right, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Logan Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
I recognize the legal issues here, but I'm going to agree with the, excuse me, Historic Preservation Commission and vote no.
So that's a no?
The ayes have it.
This is the final decision of the Planning Commission. If any person with a substantial interest in a decision of the Planning Commission chooses to appeal this decision, they may do so to the Circuit Court of Charleston County. Such appeal shall be filed within 30 calendar days after today's date. The next agenda item is subdivision 07-23-02493, a subdivision plat application taking one existing lot and creating three total lots for tax map, tax map number 614-00-00-107 at 1058 Theodore Road. Tamara Avery's going to present this.
Thank you. Again, this is subdivision application number 02493, and the applicant is taking one existing lot and creating three lots total. The current zoning of the property is S3. However, this application, like the previous one, was submitted under R4 zoning at, at the time per the ZLDR. It's a copy of the future land use map. Aerial view.
Yeah.
Flood zone. Site map from posting the signs. Then down the street and across the street. This is the proposed plat of the one lot, creating three lots, reviewed under R4 zoning standards. The section of the ZLDR, R4 for minimum lot standards. Section of the state law, 6-29-340, which gives Planning Commission the powers to approve and deny subdivision applications. And again, the section of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, in which states the subdivision applications for minor subdivisions and preliminary plats within historic districts go to the HPC for report with consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. This is a section of the Comprehensive Plan for the Cultural Resource Element Goals. And slides from the Comprehensive Plan with the element strategies and timeframes. At the Historic Preservation Commission, all eight members of the HPC stated the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the Cultural Resource Element of the Comprehensive Plan, citing inconsistencies with the element goal statement and strategies CR1, CR3, CR7, and CR9. No member stated the proposed subdivision is consistent with the Cultural Resource Element of the Comprehensive Plan. And the elements that they noted for their report are listed in the next slides. Staff recommendation, the applicant complies with all requirements of the Charleston County ZLDR, therefore, staff recommends approval of the subdivision application. Notifications, 303 letters were sent. It was posted in the Post and Courier on June 7, and signs were posted on June 4. For public input with the Historic Preservation Commission meeting on 6/26/24, seven letters in opposition and a petition in opposition with 67 signatures were received. Zero people spoke in support of the application, two people spoke in opposition of the application. And for this meeting, staff received an additional one letter in opposition and one additional petition signature in opposition. And that is it for this presentation.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission members? Okay, we'll now hear the public comments when we have the applicant.
All right, Phil Spitz, Grantham Holmes, it's the same type of submittal here. It meets our four requirements, zoning law. We're asking that it's approved for subdivision. Thank you.
Okay, who are the people who signed up to speak?
Pearl Askew?
Good evening again. Pearl Askew, 977 Gadsenville Road. My comments remains the same. It was, the applicant was under the R4. However, these lot sizes are not consistent with the pattern of the 10 Mile Historical Communities. These homes would be too close together to fit the prevailing pattern. I ask that the applicant be denied. Thank you.
Myra Richardson?
The Hamlin Community stands with the 10 Mile Community in asking you to deny this applicant's request because of the pattern of our historic districts and our settlement communities, and the fact that the setbacks and the way they're going to be positioned on the property does not fit our character. Thank you.
Okay, comments are closed, public. Any questions, comments from members of the Commissioners? Do we have a motion and a second?
Recommend staff recommendation. I move.
We got a question on a second.
We need a second. Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Logan Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is the final decision of the Planning Commission. If any person with a substantial interest in a decision of the Planning Commission chooses to appeal, they may do so to the Circuit Court of Charleston County. Such appeal shall be filed within 30 calendar days after today's date. The next agenda item is subdivision-02-24-02710, a subdivision plat application taking one existing lot and creating two lots with a residual of eight acres for tax map number 615-00-00-022 at 1424 Chandler Road. Staff presentation, please.
Thank you. So subdivision application 02710 is taking an existing lot that is approximately 11 acres, zoned RR, and creating two lots with a residual of eight acres. This is the current zoning of the property. This property was not rezoned, so it was submitted under RR zoning, and it is still currently RR zoning district. The future land use. The aerial view. Flood zone. Site maps of the property. And then down the road in the adjacent lot. So this is the proposed subdivision plat that was submitted to staff for review. Again, it was reviewed under rural residential zoning standards. This is the minimum lot requirements per the ZLDR. State law 629340, which gives Planning State law six twenty nine three forty, which gives planning commission approval to approve or deny subdivision applications. The historic preservation ordinance, section twenty one dash six, in which we take minor subdivisions and preliminary plats to HPC for consistency with the comprehensive plan. Section of the comprehensive plan, the cultural resource element. And cultural resource element strategies and timeframe, in which the HPC used to provide their report to the planning commission. All eight members of the historic preservation commission stated that the proposed subdivision is consistent with the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan, citing consistencies with strategy CR seven. No member stated the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan. And that's the section they noted that it complied with. The application complies with all requirements of the Charleston County Z L D R. Therefore, staff recommends approval. For notifications, three hundred notifications were sent out. It was posted in the Post and Courier, and signs were posted on six four twenty twenty four. Public input, one letter in support, seven letters in opposition, and a petition in opposition with twenty nine signatures were received prior to six twenty six HPC meeting. Zero people spoke in support, two spoke in opposition. In addition to that, public input from HPC, planning commission received two letters of support. And that is it for this presentation.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak?
Hello, my name's Tim Cook. I'm the applicant. I believe the subdivision application complies with the RR zoning. Over the past twenty years, I previously owned the properties on either side of the subject property, and it's been subdivided in compliance with those standards as well. So it complies with the adjacent properties. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pearl Askew?
Good evening. Pearl Askew, nine seven seven, Gastonville Road, Alwindor. We are in agreeance with the applicant and the fact that he is subdividing in a RR area. We did speak to some of the residents within that vicinity, and the fact that they didn't, some of the residents that we spoke with are positive about the subdividing, because the parcel has the amount of land that would be in comprehensive with the historical district. Thank you.
Myra Richardson? Take it off. Okay.
Okay. Case is now closed to public comment. Is there a motion and a second from the commission?
Move to approve.
Second. Questions for the commission members or staff? From the commission members to, for the staff?
Just got one question along the letters that was submitted in support, and it states that the planning commission had told this individual that the twelve acres could only be divided into four total lots. Oh, sorry.
Not used to this. The letter, one of the letters received in support stated that the planning commission had told that individual that the total acreage could only be divided in one more additional time, so there'd be a total of four lots.
That's correct. And it was staff, actually, not the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's the total density that would be allowable under that parent tract.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve, Commissioner Logan Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is the final decision of the planning commission. If any person with a substantial interest in a decision of the planning commission chooses to appeal, they may do so to the circuit court of Charleston County. Such appeal may be filed within, shall be filed, within thirty calendar days after today's date. The next agenda item is SB DV zero two dash two four dash zero two seven one six, a subdivision plat application taking one lot and creating a total of two lots for tax map number five eight three dash zero zero dash zero zero dash one one four at twenty nine eighty one Bennett Charles Road. Tamara, would you tell us your, give us your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you. So again, this is subdivision application number zero two seven one six, taking one existing lot and creating two lots. The zoning of the property is S three, and that was the zoning of the application at the time of application, so it did not change. Future land use map. Aerial view. Flood zone. Pictures of the site when we posted the sign. Down Bennett Charles Road and adjacent, the adjacent lot. This is the plat that was submitted at the time of application, showing the subdivision of one existing lot into two. And there is currently an existing house on one of the parcels shown. Section of the Z L D R for S three minimum lot standards. Section of South Carolina state law six twenty nine three forty, which gives planning commission the rights to approve or deny subdivision applications. Section twenty one dash six of the historic preservation ordinance, which states subdivision staff will take minor subdivisions and preliminary plats to HPC for a report with consistency with the comprehensive plan. Section of the comprehensive plan for the cultural resource element. And then a list of the strategies and timeframes. At the historic preservation commission, their report, all eight members of the HPC stated the proposed subdivision is consistent with the cultural resource element of the comprehensive plan, citing inconsistencies with strategies CR one, CR three, CR seven, and CR nine. No member stated the proposed subdivision is not consistent with the cultural resources. Those are the sections of the goals that they mentioned that it is consistent with. Staff recommendation, the application complies with all requirements of the Z L D R. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Notifications, three hundred and twenty three letters were sent. It was additionally posted in the Post and Courier, and signs were posted on six four twenty twenty four. Public input, for the historic preservation commission, no comments were received prior to six twenty six HPC meeting. One person spoke in support of the application, zero spoke in opposition, and for this meeting, there were no additional public inputs received. And that is the conclusion of this presentation.
Thank you. All right, we'll now hear public comments. Is the applicant here? Applicant?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm Barb Widdicombe, twenty nine eighty one Bennett Charles Road, Mount Pleasant, two nine four six six. I think I've, we started the survey in November. I think it should go through. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Richard Havisham?
Yeah, I'm Richard Havisham at twenty nine thirty eight Bennett Charles Road. Ms. Widdicombe is my neighbor, and she's been living there forever. The parcel that she wants to develop, a house used to be there. Her motherhouse used to be in that parcel, so the only thing, she's saying that she's getting a little older, and she don't want a big lot no more. And that's why she's subdividing, and the community is all for it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions, comments from the commission?
Move for staff approval.
Payman a motion for staff approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second? All right. Any, no discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Logan Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
This is the final decision of the planning commission. If any person with substantial interest in a decision of the planning commission chooses to appeal, they may do so to the circuit court of Charleston County. Such appeal shall be filed within thirty calendar days after today's date. The next agenda item is a request to rezone tax map number five seven seven dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two two, two, zero two four, and zero two five, from the special management S three zoning district to the Hamlin Acres Plan Development, PD dash one eight six zoning district, to allow for residential subdivision containing forty one lots with flexible lot sizes and standards. Is it the staff presentation?
Right, as stated, this is a request to rezone TMS numbers five seven seven, zero zero, zero zero, zero two two, zero two four, and zero two five, from the S three zoning district to PD one eighty six, the Hamlin Acres Plan Development. Prior to, the subject properties were zoned AR until the two thousand and one adoption of the Z L D R, when they were zoned to the RR one district, which was later renamed S three. In February twenty eighteen, the applicant submitted the first draft plan development for staff review. At the applicant's request, two conceptual PD development plan presentations were held at the planning commission workshops on February tenth of twenty twenty and June fourteenth of twenty twenty one. Approximately ten additional drafts of the proposed PD were submitted by the applicant for staff review between February of twenty eighteen and June of twenty twenty four. Here is the location of the subject properties when looking at the county as a whole. The future land use designation of the subject parcels is urban suburban cultural community protection. And the subject properties are largely undeveloped. Adjacent properties are within unincorporated Charleston County and primarily zone S three with single-family residences, manufactured housing units, or they are vacant. And the adjacent parcel to the south of parcels zero two two and zero two four are zoned AG ten and contain agricultural uses. The subject properties are located in the flood zone shaded X. And this is an aerial view to the north, aerial view to the south. And these are photos of subject property zero two two and zero two five. And these are photos of subject property zero two four. These are photos of a property across Hamlin Road from zero two two and an adjacent parcel to zero two five. This is the proposed conceptual site plan. And then this slide shows the comparison of allowed land uses in the current S three zoning district, which does allow for three dwelling units per acre, not including freshwater wetlands. And then the other uses listed, a C are allowed with conditions, and a S are special exception approval required by the board of zoning deals. And then we have the proposed land uses for the PD, which would allow for three point zero four, I'm sorry, three point zero four dwelling units per acre, which would include the freshwater wetlands. There's also single-family detached dwelling units, accessory structures on residential lots, home occupations, special events, passive parks, swimming pools, playgrounds, and an amenity center. And uses not permitted in the PD are accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals, and temporary uses and structures. A letter from the HOA stating approval of proposed development in land uses is required as part of every permit or approval application. This slide shows a comparison of the dimensional standards of the current S three zoning and the proposed dimensional standards within the PD. The applicant is requesting an increase in density from the three dwelling units per acre, which would not include the freshwater wetlands, to three point zero four dwelling units per acre, which would include freshwater wetlands and allow for a maximum of forty one units. They are also requesting reductions in the minimum lot area from twelve thousand five hundred square feet, if sewer and water are available, to five thousand five hundred square feet. And there are additional reduction requests for the lot width and front, side, and rear setbacks. Just the overview of what's included in the PD. As we discussed, they are proposing the forty one single-family detached dwelling units. Also, the minimum of thirty percent of the project area is to be preserved for open space. Water and sewage to be provided by Mount Pleasant Water Works. And then for lots one through thirty two, they are proposing to have a forty-foot right-of-way that will be owned and maintained by the HOA or offered for acceptance into the public road system. For lots thirty three to forty one, they are proposing, they are proposing that to be accessed via a twenty-foot ingress egress easement that will be maintained by an HOA. Neither the right-of-way or the easement complies with the requirements of the Charleston County Road and Drainage Construction Standards. Also, a HOA Board of Directors will be created to own, manage, and maintain the residential private roads and sidewalks, open space, the stormwater system, and amenity features. The applicant submitted a traffic study, which stated with construction of the project, all the study intersections should continue to function adequately. No changes are recommended. The applicant did provide responses to the approval criteria. However, staff has found due to the proposed higher density than allowed in the S three zoning, proposed reductions to the S three dimensional standards, and noncompliance of the forty-foot right-of-way and the twenty-foot ingress egress with the Charleston County Road and Drainage Construction Standards, the proposed development does not comply with the Z L D R standards. I'm sorry. And then staff also found that because of the proposed development, smaller lot sizes and increased density, it does not align with the existing development patterns of the parcels along Hamlin Road, and is therefore inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use recommendation. As noted, the approval criteria have not been met, therefore staff recommends disapproval. However, if the requested plan development were to be approved, staff recommends the following conditions here listed on the slide. Twenty one, twenty nine comments in opposition to the request, three general comments, and a petition containing two hundred and sixty eight signatures in opposition were received. This request was noticed as required. That's it.
Question. In the packet, the very last slide is a plat. I realize that's the applicant's information or submission. Can you speak to whether that is conforming under the S three guidelines?
Yes, the very last one in the packet as a whole, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is the S three guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ron? Commission? Any other questions from the commission? Does the applicant here want to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Donato. I'm with Sitecast. We're the engineers for the owner developer on this project. I know I'm under a time limit, so I'll try to keep this short. And I can back up and go to where we started in 2018 and how we got here today. And I'm happy maybe later on, if you want me to come back up and I can speak more to how does something start in 2018 and finally get in front of you in 2024. I do think it's important to note that in October of 2021, the PD zoning did change. So in the middle of this writing of a PD, the zoning, the ZLDR did change for the PD, which stated that the underlying zoning and density and lot sizes had to also be met inside of a PD. So that was a curveball that was thrown to us when we kind of revisited this project in 2022 and worked with staff. I wanted to say also real quick, a big thank you to Joel Evans and Andrea for all their help with this. They've been super helpful and kind and patient with us. And we just appreciate all of their hard work with this. What we have here is a choice. I understand this is more units. We're going from 41 to what we currently could build is 24 on this project right now. The previous submittals that you had in front of you met zoning code, met the law, and you approved it because you had to approve it. I could bring a plat in front of you that's 24 lots and you basically have to approve it because it meets zoning code. Or we have another option. We can go the PD route, which is what we presented in front of you. Yes, it's 41 lots, but it's not just for nothing. There are advantages to the PD. One, a PD requires 30% open space. S3 does not. We do not have to have open space with S3. So 30% of the lot, of the project, will be conserved in an open space. Also, we will bring gravity water and sewer mains to this project. That's 2,500 feet of water and sewer mains will be brought to this project, will also could be used by the community. I, from what I've been able to see, at least 12 homes will be able to tap, current homes will be able to tap onto those lines, including ours. And so that keeps, that gets them off of septic tanks and that keeps 24 new homes off of septic tanks. So that's an advantage. Also, with this PD, we have a 10-foot type A buffer around the property. That is not required in S3 zoning. So yes, we could bring S3 in front of you. We could have 24 lots. We could have no open space. We could have no buffers. And we could have no gravity sewer. Or we can go this route. Gravity sewer and water, we estimated somewhere into between $750,000 to $1 million just to get it to this site. So the community does get something for what we're asking. We're not just asking for everything. We're also willing to give back. It is important to note that we're a half a mile away from Hamlin Plantation, which has townhomes in it, which is certainly more dense than what we're asking for. We're also a half a mile away from Lang School, which is a great opportunity for kids to walk and bike to school. We're a half a mile away from Woodland Park, which is also a townhome community, smaller units, more dense than us. We're a half mile away from Lemon Place, which is across from Lang Middle School, which is similar lot sizes to us. And we're a mile away from Wexford Park in Fulton Hall, which also have similar lot sizes to us. So we're not coming out of left field with these lot sizes. There are examples of this in the surrounding area. I would love to answer any questions, if you have any, or I will save through the presentation. I can come back up at a later time. But, you know, please understand that, yes, we are asking for more units, but we're also giving something back. We're giving back 30% open space. We're giving water and sewer mains at, you know, between 3/4 to $1 million in infrastructure will be put in. And our lot sizes are similar to some surrounding subdivisions that are a half mile away.
Any questions for the applicant?
Did you have a chance to meet with the community and explain that to them?
I believe the developer did have some community meetings. I was not involved in those, so I can't speak to what was said in those meetings.
You mentioned that if this were not a PD, that there would be 24 lots allowed by right. Would that be with water and sewer or without water and sewer?
Without water and sewer.
Okay. My other question, you mentioned that there'll be 30% of the area preserved for open space?
Yes, ma'am.
Which includes an amenity center. Please help me understand how that's open space?
Well, that's HOA. Open space is not developed by a lot. In other words, 20, if we did 24 lots, there would be, in essence, no open space. The grass you're going to see is in between the houses and in between the houses and roads. Whereas this development has 30% of the whole entire site is not developed.
An amenity center I would consider development, wouldn't you?
I guess, would you consider a park development?
It's not a building.
It doesn't, an amenity center doesn't have to be a building. I mean, we're not proposing a building per se and a pool. We're just proposing an open space or a potential playground.
Thank you.
I mean, our site plan, we're not showing a building. We're not showing a building and a pool and that's.
I'm just reading the words.
Sure, I understand.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm here.
All right. Request was.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if it would help to shed some light. You referenced at the beginning, starting at 2018 and working your way. I know you summarized that a little bit, but is there anything we're missing?
Well, I mean, you can get into a litany of reasons. I mean, you know, 2018 through 2021, there's COVID, which slowed things down, which made the market incredibly volatile. And do you move forward with a project like this? Then there was the zoning change, which also we had to basically, I mean, every page of the PD that was originally submitted was then changed and had to work with staff to get that fixed and cleaned up. I think there was also some legal issues between the owner and developer and the sellers of the property, which slowed things down. So when you submit this, you have to submit an affidavit of ownership that has to be signed by the current owner. And the developer owner owns one of the parcels, but not two of them. And to get that signed, it took some time. So it, and I think it basically took a year just to get a piece of paper signed. So there was a lot of reasons for that.
I got two questions. The first is, why was there no connection attempt to Silverstone on the north side? And then on the south side, what's the thought process between, like, with the road dead-ending and to the property to the south of it?
Sure. So with Silverstone being unimproved, I think there was some concern about, I mean, it's, well, how about this? Silverstone is what we're asking for on the south side. The, I think there's actually three roads there. So Silverstone, you know, is used by 10 homes that are on that, that single, you know, that kind of a dirt road, maybe 20 feet wide right-of-way, which we're asking on the south side is we're asking for eight. But to connect to it, we felt like it really is not an improved road and it's not something that we should be connecting to and then dumping traffic on a dirt road to those residents. We actually did think the residents would want that. So we didn't go that route. We didn't ask for that.
And then on the south side?
On the south side, we do know we're going to have some work to do for a proper turnaround for fire trucks. We're working through that with staff now. But at the time, it was, it was, at the time, it was allowed. When this thing first started in 2018, it's not allowed now, but we're working through that. If we have to put a T in, a T or a hammerhead or lose a lot, then that's what we'll do.
Anticipation to connect to anything in the future on that? I know that south lot's a large lot.
It's a big farm.
Right.
I, well, how about this? I mean, we are fine with the right-of-way coming right up to the property line. And if something happens on that farm one day, 10, 15, 30, 50 years from now, they could connect to us. So there can be a connection there. I mean, we're okay with that. We're not interested in, we're not going to put a spike strip between our right-of-way and them. So we're happy to extend the right-of-way all the way up, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was an assumption that something was going to happen in the future. And that's why it just stopped at the line.
We have, if there's something happening there, we don't know it.
Okay.
I guess I look at a PUD and look to the benefit that it's going to accrue to the community for the change from the existing zoning. You're now looking at a 70% increase in density, which is pretty significant. And the benefit that you're passing on is roughly $1 million, which is roughly $25,000 per unit. I don't know. It seems that's very skewed to the developer to me. I hear what you say, but I guess if I were looking at the community, I'd rather the zoning under the existing zoning rather than the PUD.
Well, that's what we're here to give you a chance to make a choice.
Okay.
And that's what we're here. We're here stating, we can do this development. We feel like it's an add to the community. We feel like 3/4 of $1 million to $1 million worth of infrastructure is an add. We feel like 30% open space, as opposed to no open space, is an add. We feel like this development is similar to three or four other developments within a half mile, with similar lot sizes.
People that don't agree with you.
Okay, that's, that's fine. And I understand and you definitely have that right. But there, we feel like this is a better alternative. Rather than 24 lots, like they all look with septic tanks and wells, we can do that. I would rather not. I think this is a better development. I think it's better for the community. But that's my opinion.
Is the, this is O'Andal Consolidated Fire Department? Or is this Mount Pleasant?
I believe this is Mount Pleasant. This is Mount Pleasant. When I get, when I went for the, the letter, I went to Mount Pleasant.
Is that correct, Joel? Is this Mount Pleasant?
Let me have a check. I'm not sure.
Okay. Again, just, O'Andal Fire Department is utterly overwhelmed. I had a friend whose house burned to the ground recently, not for their want of trying, but they can't handle another one unit, much less 41. And my other comment would be, I mean, I agree with Warwick. If there's some overwhelming reason to ignore the underlying zoning, okay, fine. But otherwise, what's the point of zoning? If you're just going to ignore it and allow PDs everywhere?
I think, Susan, to answer your question, O'Andal and Mount Pleasant work together. But it's in the O'Andal, it's in the O'Andal.
My understanding is that there is not a reciprocal agreement. And I'm not sure if I have the legal stuff right, but I've spoken to Chief Gadsden about it. And that we, to have a reciprocal agreement, we have to have, we, I live in O'Andal, have to have more equipment than we do for them to be able to, for there to be a reciprocal agreement.
Okay.
Do we have a calculation? You know, the two different densities, you have one at three dwellings per acre and then one at 3.04 dwelling units per acre, if you don't include the freshwater wetlands. Well, per the zoning, you know, we shouldn't be including the freshwater wetlands. So do you know that number of what that density would be without taking into consideration the freshwater wetlands in the acreage?
I don't have that top of my head. If you, I'll sit down and I'll do the math.
I would just, yeah, I'm just curious about that.
And the, the other thing is, on the conceptual site plan,
there's this little gap. There's just one parcel that's not included in the PDD, but it seems like you're including sidewalks and type A buffers or something like that in the, in and on that parcel too. Do you have some sort of agreement with that property owner and to include them in this process? Or is that just for show?
They're actually not in this PD.
Yeah. I understand it's not in the PDD, but you still are depicting it as if it's part of it on some of these.
Well, I actually tried to on the PD. That's not on purpose. It's just that parcel is there. Just like, for instance, the parcels to the left and right of the north piece, we're still showing those parcels. We're still showing that that parcel exists and it's there. I, but I, I tried to make certain in the PD documents that it, when it came to that piece on the exhibits, that it said not in PD. We're not trying to claim it's ours or anything like that.
Got it. And then with regards to the roads, so you don't intend to bring those up to, to the current county standard so they would just become driveways? Is that essentially how you're going to maintain them? Or the HOA will maintain them as driveways essentially?
Correct. Well, I mean, so, I'm sorry. Can you say that question again?
It sounds like you're, the intention is not to meet county road standards with the exist, with the proposed roads. So those are meant to be owned and maintained by the HOA long-term as basically driveway access?
Yes.
Anything else? A request was, thank you.
Thank you.
A request was received from Cassandra Davis to give her presentation regarding the request. And she has been granted 10 minutes to give her presentation. Is Cassandra here?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cassandra Johnson Davis. And I am a daughter of the Hamlin Beach community. I was born and raised there. My father is Thomas Johnson. And I am the great, great granddaughter of Samuel Johnson, who, who was a slave of the Hamlin family on the actual Copahoe plantation. I requested to do a presentation on behalf of the Hamlin Beach community. And we're here as a community to oppose the oppression and the gentrification of our people. I am a proud United States Army Disabled Veteran. And one of the things we used to say is this, we defend. When we travel around the world, it was always our thing to say when we get back to American soil, we would kiss the ground. In my family, we call our soul black gold. The Hamlin Beach Community family would like to thank Madam Chair, the commission and everyone here in attendance for giving us the opportunity to make this presentation today. I would like those that are here standing with me to please stand. I want to thank each and every one of you. Some of these family members have taken off from work. You may be seated. And we have dozens and dozens of other people who could not make it today because they are at work or have other prior obligation. Our community's statement of opposition is, no, no, no. A survey was conducted, as mentioned before, by the young lady, that we had 293 people who supports our no. It was 125 residents and our survey was continuously going forward, but we had a time period to submit our documents. We had 168 regular, everyday family and friends who do not live in the Hamlin Beach community area that stands with us. And people called me even this morning saying, can I sign the petition? We're asking that the commission take a few minutes and think about, why is it that we have a government? It is to keep things in order. It is to keep the flow of communities being managed so that we can live one with another. The Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulation, Article 4.11, governs the S3 Special Management District. The maximum density is three principal dwellings per acre with a minimum lot size of 12,500 square feet if water and sewer is available. Now, what we want to remember is, as mentioned, recently, this S3 came to the table before in order to be changed. Everyone, including the developer, had an opportunity to put in their point of view as to how this 12,500 should be moved around and regulated. At the end of that, Charleston County Commission stood with the communities and left. and left it at 12,500 square feet. And we know that some people in our area has water, has sewer, and has well water. But we are aggressively moving forward to take advantage of the grants that Charleston County has available and the town of Mount Pleasant has available for family members to get off of the dependency of water, well water, and sewer. That road does not have an additional 20-something homes and residents to take advantage of a $1.6 million quote of water and sewer that the town of Mount Pleasant Waterworks gave to the developer. I know that's not on my slides, but I wanted to ensure and let everyone know that our community has done our homework and that we know that this development would not be of advantage to us. I want to bring to your attention the most recent comprehensive plan that has been put forward and adopted. Again, the developer had an opportunity to gain support from other developers that are trying to come into our communities to impact how the Commission voted on how to keep the comprehensive plan in flow. The land that this development, developer is trying to develop is considered urban suburban cultural community protection. And I quote, "This future land use designation is intended to protect and promote the culture and unique development patterns of existing communities and sustain their strong sense of community." Charleston County historic African-American communities date back to the post-Civil War area when Black freedmen and women began establishing their own political and economic independence. Even though some of these communities have unofficial beginnings, their parcel linear size, shape, and casual patterns are frequently visually striking and in certain situations may be the most significant feature. It is these patterns of development that should be protected. Future development should be compatible with the existing land usage and development patterns and residential density should be a maximum of four dwellings per acre. And we know that the S3 zoning, and I'm quoting the comprehensive plan, should only have three dwelling per acre. Zoning and land development regulations in these areas should be customized to meet the needs of the individual communities, end quote. Give you a little history about our community. In 1881, African-Americans who were former slaves and the children of former slaves, which is my great, great grandfather. He was a, a child of a slave. But his father, Samuel Johnson, did not live to see where he could actually purchase the land. So when his son became old enough, he was allowed to. Um, that's just an example. Purchased land from the Hamlins. Um, and other freedmen were, were seeking, who were seeking a better life after slavery. They became farmers, fishermen, ranchers, and other tradesmen. They all purchased 31 10-acre lots from Ham, from the Hamlins and founded the Hamlin Beach Community. I'm excited to share with the, the Commission this time because I didn't have the information the last time. Our community shares a South Carolina historical marker with the Cooksville Cemetery and the Copahoe Plantation. This marker was erected in 2011 by Christ Parish, Christ, Christ Church Parish Preservation Society. The marker number is 1074. Our community's motto is, "Our faith is strong, our love is genuine, and our heritage is everlasting." Around the year 2000, our community established its first community board. So we've been around and organized for a while. Now, in 2024, we have been recognized by the state of South Carolina as a nonprofit with exemption. And we are currently seeking our 501(c)(3). And that is going to be a valuable asset to our community to continue to preserve us but also advance our community. The things we've done over the years, I cannot list them all for our community to grow, but here are a few. We participated in the Town of Mount Pleasant Settlement Community Task Force, where Charleston County was actively involved in that project. We are currently enrolled in the Low Country Oral History Initiative. And our representative is here with us. Please stand, Ms. Lou. Wave your hand for us. And I am the representative of our community for the Gullah Geechee Heritage Preservation Project Cohort. And Ms. Emily Pickett, which is one of my mentors, who's been helping me learn all of these ordinances. And when I say mentor, I mean, I call her phone and bother her all the time trying to learn this stuff. Um, uh, she's the project head for the unincorporated Charleston County. And this, uh, organization is put together by the city of Charleston, the town of Mount Pleasant, and the Charleston, the Charleston County, Town of Mount Pleasant and the city of Charleston. Excuse me. Uh, we receive mentorship from tons of the Gullah Geechee community activists. I'm not sure if they're also here, but if you are, just wave your hand. Some of these people who've been in the game a long time, where you at? I, I see y'all out there. They ain't gonna wave their hand. But we call them on the phone and they teach us what we need to know when it comes down to ordinances, laws, and even how to deal with developers because half of their neighborhoods have been taken. It wasn't, we, we didn't know the information. A lot of the, the ordinance and stuff had not been designed in our favor to protect the Gullah Geechee community. So therefore, they've taken all that they know and given it to us so that we can be one of those small communities that can say we were protected. Some of the civic organizations that we attend meetings like this and departments, like I said, we call Charleston County, Town of Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant Waterworks, South Carolina Representatives, the South Carolina Legislature, and the Department of Interior. And I'd like to speak to the Mount Pleasant Waterworks. Mount Pleasant Waterworks has a, uh, they are in connection with national organizations. There are three of them. And those national organizations are designed to help the, uh, the communities get the things that they need. Mount Pleasant Waterwork doesn't have $1.6 million to run a line for our community members to have sewage. But they do have access to grants so that we can request the funding to get the proper sewage and water for our community members. And like I said before, it's not 20 of them on that particular runway. Um, our community's statement of opposition. Once again, I just want to remind you that we did say no, no, no. And reminded you about the actual supporters who have stood with us. But here's a little information that I want to give this Commission. And I really want you to think about it, not just the S3 rating and not just the comprehensive plan, uh, statement so that we can preserve our communities. But I want you to know that I worked closely with Larry Paragono, his attorney, and the engineers, working with them, trying to come up with an, with something that would best serve our community. I was not only banished by him, and I, yes, I mean banished, but I was also disrespected. We asked them to enter into a community benefits agreement to see if it was something that we can present to the board and the community, and he refused to do it. He verbally offered us $5,000 for our youth group. And I asked him, what are we going to do with that? He refused to build homes that resemble the homes in our communities. If you ever take a ride around Hamlin, we have some really nice homes. We don't have little stick houses like they try to portray, the enhancement of our communities. No, we have nice homes. And so they should try to find a way to develop properties that look like our, our community. What's wrong with that? He refused to put some of the land in a land trust to build attainable and affordable homes for the descendants of the Hamlin Beach community slaves and the original land buyers and neighboring East Cooper community residents. Having homes in this price point of $200,000 or less would help those young people and the older people who need something and somewhere to live that would not cause them to have to think about a $700,000-plus mortgage. And that's where it stands at right now of what the houses are going to go for in that particular development. They not only offered us, like I said, that $5,000 and denied us, um, the different things we asked for. They never came back to the table and met with the community. One of the council members said, have you met with the community? And he said, ah, I really don't know. He knows that he didn't because him and the lawyer met with the Cage. And Cage is one of our partners. But we have to deal with the truth. Um, and offered Cage $300,000 for community support to bypass the Hamlin community. It was a small, secret meeting. And one person in the meeting came out of the meeting and informed us of what was going on. We put a cease and desist in reference to this $300,000, and it was not adhered to. Here we have a map. And this came out of a presentation that Denise Marie Fugel put together a few years ago. Um, she is the Housing for All Mount Pleasant Executive Director. And she learned about the settlement communities when helping me with this problem. And since then, she has been a trailblazer going throughout the, the state trying to figure out how we can have attainable homes for people like ourselves. You see this map? This is east of the Cooper. And you see all that property that used to be Charleston County settlement communities. This is what we're looking at right now. That's left in the east of the Cooper. If I had a map to show you the planned development that went in there, I think we'd all cry. In closing, once again, I want to thank you, Madam Chair, the Commission, and everyone in attendance for giving us the opportunity to make this presentation regarding our opposition of the proposed planned development of Hamlin Acres. I'm willing to answer questions. And if I cannot answer them, I'm asking that the Commission allow me to lean on my community members who would be able to assist me in this matter. So I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for, um, Ms. Davis? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There were several people that signed up to speak. Uh, start with, uh, Lorraine Hinton or Histon? Okay. Uh, Myra Richardson?
Good day again, Myra Richardson. I will start with when we did the pledge. Justice for all. We are all. The Hamlin community and the residents, we are part of that. And the disrespect that has gone along with this project. I will start with 2017. And I may take more than two minutes because it's a long tale. In 2017, the residents of Earl Johnson Lane, and I am one of them, I came home to orange dots on all of my trees, not knowing what was going on. The next day, there was a surveyor 30 feet into the residence property that's attached to Hamlin Beach Road. I mean, Hamlin Road. I called her outside and I said, you need to come outside because there's a gentleman 30 feet into your property. And we asked him what was going on. He said that they wanted water and sewer to connect to Hamlin Road from, through Earl Johnson Lane from Boston Grove Road. In 2010, when they were building their new homes, one of the homes that was pictured, Mount Pleasant Waterworks refused to help them get water and sewer. But in 2017, when the development started coming in, wanting to develop that property, all of a sudden, they can help get water and sewer to those two homes. We were not consulted. I called Mount Pleasant Waterworks and I asked the question, what was going on? Their statement to me was, we were trying to figure out what to do with y'all. They were figuring, trying to figure out what to do with us. I told them, they told us they were going to come around and they were going to hand out a piece of paper. That was in 2017 and 2018. I said, no, you're going to have a meeting and you're going to show everybody the graphs, the charts, the documents, everything at one time. The residents called that meeting. In 2021, when we refused to sign off on the project, in 2021, they sent out a letter of condemnation to one of the residents who property did not actually, he's part of Earl Johnson Lane, but Earl Johnson Lane did not run through his property. They were going to take his property by condemnation to help get water and sewer to Hamlin Road. And it was to help the developer. The water in the sewer line is, needs to be replaced on Earl Johnson Lane. Mount Pleasant Waterworks knew this for decades, since the 90s. In 2012, they took over the line in a sense because at that point, residents were able to connect to the line and do the work themselves. The gentleman was not able to do that work. He did it, but it was improperly installed. In 2024, we're back again. Every time there's a move by the developer, Mount Pleasant Waterworks is moving on Earl Johnson Lane. They knew it was a problem. They never chose to fix the problem. And one of their statements, they say, the purpose for this easement is to get water and sewer to Hamlin Road and to properties on Hamlin Road.
You've, you've used your two minutes. Can you wrap it up, please?
And I'm, am wrapping it up because what we're asking you to do, what we're asking them to do, what we're asking you to do, and wrapping this up is the fact that, how are they getting water and sewer to this property? They're using condemnation to take our property and use Earl Johnson Lane as a cheap pass-through. And we are not a cheap pass-through. We're trying to establish generational wealth. They're trying to put a generational curse on us. Everybody will be making money on this project. And the residents is going to be stuck paying for sewer for the rest of our lives and our children's life. So before approving anything with this project, we're asking you to stick to the comprehensive plan. It does not fit the pattern of our community. It does not fit the pattern of the settlement communities. But more important than that, why is it that every time there's development and infrastructure is always placed on our backs? Charleston County, you are our elected representatives. Please protect us from ore development. And also ask Mount Pleasant Waterworks or this developer, where they're planning on getting water and sewer from. I received the paperwork from them by request. It's 4.4 million dollars. Where did Mount Pleasant Waterworks get 4.4 million dollars to do a sewer project on Earl Johnson Lane? The date of this project was 2022.
Okay, you're back to 2022 now, so.
No, I'm telling you, this is what, it's 2022, but it's signed 2024. They say the date of the project is 2022. They signed it again in 2024. And the last thing I will say is that when we asked Mount Pleasant Waterworks if they were in contact with this developer, they told us no. When we received the four-year request, they have a letter in this packet dated April 8th, 2024. They sent condemnation letters to all of the residents on Earl Johnson Lane that is dated April 12th, 2024, four days after they sent a letter to the developer. And they keep telling us it's a coincidence. Once again, our area, our areas are not cheap pass-through for finance. Once again, our area, our areas are not cheap pass through for financial gain, for profitable gain. So please deny this request, and in fact, we would love that area as greenbelt for our, our community.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Kelly Johnson, and then William German?
Sorry, it's actually Lily Johnson.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, so I'd just like to state my opposition to the development. Um, I'm a resident, well, my family resides in Hamelin. We've been there for generations, Cassandra's my older sister. Um, and I'd also like to state on record that any organization, may it be Cage or any individuals at Cage that are, have been working with the developer for financial gain, I'd like to state that they do not represent the Hamelin community, nor do they, so I'm not certain if you have, um, if you have any contracts or any community benefits agreements that you all have been discussing, because the three hundred thousand is what has been on the table, so we'd like to get more information if you all are in agreement to work with someone else to get this project to go through. And so I'd also like to state that, you know, today, it's not a black or white thing, it's not a settlement community versus developer thing. It's a, we have, you know, this is where we've lived for generations. So I'd also like to state that today is settlement communities, tomorrow's gonna be your subdivisions. So take heed, and let's make sure that we're on the right side of history with this thing. That's it.
Thank you.
Uh, William German?
I love Steve again.
Doctor. Um, we did Chris already.
My name is Isaiah Ori. I live at fifteen thirteen Boston Grove Road all my life. And I heard the young man, and y'all heard the young man, he going back to twenty eighteen. You know, versus twenty eighteen, in all my life, I see the ups and downs with my small community where I live. You know, I would try to make a difference, but his changes should never happen. I don't want to tie you up. Thank you.
Uh, Leo O'Neal Jr.?
Leo O'Neal Jr. I live at fifteen thirty-eight Hamelin Road, and I appreciate your time today, and I stand in agreement with the Hamelin community and your staff decision to, uh, not go along with this zoning change. I have not lived in this community for a long time. I am from a family of immigrants, as well as my great-great-grandmother having been a Cherokee, and if we know what has happened to the Indian population in this country. So I, I, I resonate very much with their plight. I've lived in the Charleston area my entire life, and I've seen it swamped and eaten away by planned development after planned development by many people who do not plan to invest their lives into the community. This is a loving community, it's a special community, and where my family has tried to go in the Charleston area over the years, it just is encroached continually, and we were blessed to find a home here and build with my own hands, not a developer, not a builder, because we couldn't afford that. I built it with my own hands for my family, a house in this community, and we've been accepted there, and we love this community. This isn't a black or white thing, like she just said. This isn't a, this is none of that. This is about having a place to live with peace and in an environment that people are accepting and love you and want to see, through, people flourish. I mean, we, up here on our seal, we're about history. I love history. History's very, very important, and for all of us, it's different. Culture, very, very important to each and every one of us and in different ways, and learning to live in the United States of America, one nation under God, gives us a heritage beyond what is just in this life, but things eternal. And this is important, and I just wanted to share this with you. Thank you for your time, and thank all of you, and hopefully the, the right thing will be done.
Thank you.
Sam, Sam Spence?
Hello, everybody. I'm Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston, and the Preservation Society opposes the proposed rezoning of these parcels in the Hamelin Beach community in recognition of residents' longstanding concerns about this project and in support of planning staff's recommendation for disapproval. Development pressures in historic settlement communities like Hamelin have been present for years, and Charleston County knows that, and for a decade or more, projects have been underway to make a concerted effort to document and protect these historic communities. And as was mentioned earlier, the, the, a little bit about the Gullah-Gi Chi Heritage Preservation Project. Uh, it's a national, it's a National Park Service-funded, grant-funded project with the Town of Mount Pleasant and Charleston County and the City of Charleston, with the Preservation Society providing some support as well. Uh, and as part of that project, one of the things that Hamelin residents have discussed doing is completing an area, area character appraisal or a cultural resources inventory, uh, which is one of the elements that the community would need if they went and pursued historic district designation if they chose. The comp plan, just adopted by county council six weeks ago, says in pretty uncertain terms about the urban suburban cultural community protection, that future, future development should be compatible with the existing land uses and development patterns, as was said earlier. This PD would increase density beyond what's allowed under S3 zoning, the existing zoning. It would decrease lot sizes by more than half and decrease setbacks to allow homes ten feet apart from each other, and generally disregard years of continued concerns by longtime residents and patient, patient guidance by staff. So we ask you to follow the guidance set out in the comp plan and the clear criteria in the ZLDR and recommend disapproval. Thanks.
Uh, Levon, Levon Hurl, Hurlback? Oh.
Can I speak your address?
That's up to the chairperson.
Did you sign up?
I signed up.
Uh, um, what is your name, ma'am?
Jennifer Horleback.
Oh, you're related to, well, yeah, I, I mean, I guess.
Sure, go ahead. Keep it to two minutes.
That's the last, that's the last speaker. Oh, now we have.
I am Jennifer Horleback, and, um, this is my home. We were raised, they from little girls to, I mean, siblings, and.
Put you, put, put, pull some.
Pull it down, sir. Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, you know, it's my father's, uh, area, and we've been back and forth to and from school there. And we've lived here for, um, about a hundred and one year. My dad died at the age of ninety-three, so, I mean, it's, you just can't have people just come and just bogart their way. I wish that y'all would reconsider denying some of these buildings coming through because we still have children out there that needs home and place to stay and a ground we could say that this is where we were raised. They might be able to raise their children, you know what I mean, and go on from there. I mean, we would love to have extra people, but, I mean, it, it's a kind of a little stuck, but come on, um, it's just not necessary for the bunch of buildings. You don't have places for children to play anymore. You don't have, ah, room for the children, and that's just what I wanted to say. And I, I wish y'all would reconsider not having all these buildings coming up, because they're further lands out there. Why you wanna flop right here in front of us? So, I mean, just, just give us a chance. We can do it by community. Thank you.
And there is, there is actually one more.
Michael German, seventeen oh seven Snout Road. I live in the Snout community, and I want you to know, the commissioners, that the Snout community stand in support with the Hamelin community. I want to piggyback on something I, I heard, uh, and it does make a little bit of sense to me. Liberty and justice for all. Um, I heard S3, it's already in S3. If it's, that's what currently stand, I don't understand why this is such a difficult decision to make. And not being long-winded, I do have a comment for the developer. I heard the developer say to you that we think that what we're going to do is going to improve, help the Hamelin community. My answer to you developers is, don't think about it. The people are right there. Go and get the answers from them, and I'm sure that they're intelligent enough to tell you exactly what they need and not what you think they need to help the situation. Communication is the key.
Please, please speak.
Oh, and communication is the key, and without communication, proper communication, we're not gonna get anywhere. So let's stop trying to figure out what my thoughts are. I'm right here, just ask me. And we, we would move forward faster, and I think all of us would be in agreement when we speak.
The discussion is now closed to public comment. Is there a motion in a second for the?
Move to accept staff's recommendation of disapproval.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I would, just a comment. I am very impressed by the turnout from the community. I don't think I've ever seen it in my twelve years of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
We got a motion in a second? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Logan Davis?
Abstain.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
County Council will hear these requests at their public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty in council chambers, and again at their September fifth, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at five p.m. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. Okay. I don't have any remarks? You got any remarks?
No.
Okay. There being no further business, the meeting of Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned. The Planning Commission will hold its next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, August twelfth, at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four, at two p.m. in council chambers. Be there or be square.
Be there or be square. Where was that from?
Was that Happy Days or something?
Yes, I think it was.
Well, it was a good meeting, actually. I enjoyed it today.